The same thing as far as farmers market. But my, so I'm glad it came up Kathy. My other question was you were mentioning Dory shooting for four times, doing this four times between August and September. Do you mean four individual days? Or like, for example, night market, would we do it both days?
You know what, I'm gonna leave that to the group to decide. And if you decide, you know, I'm saying four because that seems like we have enough people power to do that. But if we decide on four days, we can talk about that. And I turned to Neil and Sean, and I wonder about availability of BP.
Yeah, and that's what I'd say. I really, um, you know, I think we should do one, see how it goes. I think we should earmark other ones. But when you talk about public space, I think libraries is always a good area. And that that kind of falls in line with the farmer's market right there. But if we're gonna do something like this, yeah, I think, uh, you know, four might be, might be a high goal. But I guess we don't know, we don't know. And, um, you know, we could certainly plan for that. But, um, I wouldn't say that's absolutely the number we should or shouldn't do. So that's just my two cents.
Okay.
So if I ask it another way, based on personnel and resources. Neil, if we wanted to make sure that we had police officers at a certain number, how many would you say that police officers might be able to attend? Being reasonable and knowing that you have other community engagement commitments and other duties?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that for this particular project that there'd be any more than two officers at any time for, for one of these events. I think, uh, I think that's a reasonable number to manage what we're asking right now.
Okay.
Hey boss, can I pop in here real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah, go for it.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the number of events and, and, uh, I concur with everything that has been said already. I really like the idea of farmer's market because it's because of the longevity of that event. And, and Kathy's absolutely right. There's a, there's a, there's a consistent attendance on, on pretty decent numbers that are always going to that event. So that's, I think that's kind of an easy one. The, the manny knit door, to answer your question. If, if you do want a limited presence there, then that's, that's really kind of what I do as part of my job. I, I can, I can fill the manpower needs there. That's, that shouldn't be an issue. You know, what's, what's kind of hindering us is really the, the semi closed reality of COVID. You know, most of the large drawing events that we would be doing in a regular season, you know, a lot of the THPRD, party in the parks, the concerts in the parks, the things like that, that, that regularly draw, um, up to a thousand or even a few thousand people to them are fantastic events to, you know, do a pop up like this and be assured that you're gonna get a handful of eyeballs and minds on, on your questions. It's just that everybody, I mean, we're, we're, me and my partner Consuelo are literally in this business. And everybody is in this sort of holding pattern for release to plan. But larger events, as we are approaching the first day of summer, you know, that, uh, event organizers and planners are really kind of up against it right now to, to, to kind of make this hard decisions. And a lot of the things that they were hopeful to be doing are literally actively being canceled. That's not to say that, uh, I mean, I've, I've seen, I'm in the list of, of sort of just notifications for event permits in the city. And, you know, I, for the first time in like nine months, I saw like 10 of them come across my computer this, you know, the last 10 days. So, um, things are opening up. The first big one, like you guys have already talked about, is the Pride event. We're gonna have a coffee with the cops there. And I know you guys, I, I heard you guys are gonna be there also. So, you know, if, if we can make it happen in the timeline, that, that, that might not be a bad place to start. We've already got officers who are gonna be assigned to that. Yeah, it's, it's the manpower for the, for the frequency that you're talking about. I'm not gonna have a problem getting those slots filled. It's just really, I think the most consistent event that I know is already planned and on the docket and isn't going anywhere for the, you know, for right now is gonna be a farmer's market and, and night market. I, I concur. The night market event, yes, that was 5,000 people, but it's a new location now. Slightly different, um, sort of setup for that. You know, it's, it's not just a one night event, it's a two night event. But yeah, night, night market historically drew like 5,000 people at least. So, well, and I think people are gonna, I think there's gonna be a lot of people there. I, I really do. People are itching to get out of the house, so.
I agree.
Okay.
Having worked on that.
Actually, actually, one more thing. I, I would say reach out to THPRD because, because they are, uh, they are actively going over sort of planning for what they're going to cancel and, and they are, you know, I, I think maybe they're, they're starting to really try and plan things for like September and October that would normally be done in, in July and August. So that's, you know, my two cents there.
Great. Thank you, Sean. That's wonderful.
Yeah, you bet.
I'm typing, I'm inserting things as we speak. Other thoughts?
I think Sergeant Kramer had a good idea about THPRD. And I'm happy to support outreach there. Just, um, let's, that's to make sure I'm staying consistent with talking points. But yeah, Lulu over there and Holly could support with, you know, letting us know what events they got going on and where we could do a pop up.
Seth, then I have a question for all of us as a group. Do you wanna assign just one or two people to be in charge of, um, researching events with Paulo and following up with Paulo about events? And then coming back to this group, um, July 6th, it's right after the July 4th holiday, but we could make it a later time. And that, then my question for you, Sean and Neil, would be, um, how much in advance do you need to, um, schedule officers for events?
Not long at all, because we can't find anybody. You, you may just have yours truly there, so we'll, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
We can, uh, we can work, we can work that out. Yeah. What do you think, Sean?
Well, based on the, the mental image that, that, that I have from the description earlier, um, yeah. You, you give me a couple hours notice and I'll get you a couple of eyes. And concur with what Neil said. And if I can't, then you get me.
Lovely to hang out with you gentlemen for a while. Love the idea. And so, anybody wanna volunteer to do more research with Paulo? And then come back to us with a proposed list of events? These are ideas that we have right now. Anybody wanna do some more thinking, Sadie, are you?
I can happen.
Yeah. Is that hand up for volunteering?
Yes, I can, I can happen.
Thank you. Appreciate ya. Nice. So I think that takes us to where we need to go for today, looking at our time. Um, anything else that you're seeing on here? That, for example, I'm wondering if we could have a subcommittee work on the physical specifications for the artist? Because that's gonna need to happen relatively quickly. Kathy, would you like to work on that with me?
Um, yes, tell me more about that, please.
So when we, um, different artists work in different ways, but they usually wanna have a conversation. It's like, what are your expectations? What is the size of this thing? What's the weight of this thing? What do you want it to do? So it's described, it's usually those conversations of us having a conversation describing it, writing it down. And that becomes a guide for the artist to might wanna submit a proposal.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. So I'm putting it over here and I'm gonna say Kathy and Dory. And I think, Kathy, I have a, a real deadline because I'm leaving next week. Are you around next week?
My Spanish starts up next week every day. And so I'd like to do it. I don't know what to tell you. It's gonna be a cramped time, but I will be here next week.
Or we can do it the week after. I just won't be in Portland.
You'll be here next week?
Yeah, I'm here next week and then I leave for three weeks.
Okay, then let's do it next week.
Okay. I'm gonna say week of, I think it's the 25th. So I think we can get, I think we can really get that then. Great. So that gives us some things that we are working on that we can share. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Dory, and for the questions, I, I don't know that we need, we can have another meeting, but I, I think we can probably correspond back and forth with track changes or whatever to, uh, come up with the verbiage, uh, whatever. If you, if you have that discussion about the, about the questions today or, or any other day, we, we can, I think we could probably, uh, suffice it to say, do it, do it by, by email, but we can have another meeting to solidify things. But, uh, I think that would probably help ease the, uh, the commitments for everyone.
Yeah, I love the idea of using track changes once we have our conversation today. To come up with and finalize the questions and the demographic questions. The other person we want included, the demographic piece would probably be Brittany, because she's more current in her, having just done a lot of research. She's probably more current in her language than I am. And, and my sweet spot of what I'm looking at is really kind of different from this project. So that's where some of the, the pieces came from on the, uh, the sample prototype. So are we ready to hop to questions, folks, for about 20 minutes? Does that sound good to everybody? Work?
All right. All right, everyone. Thank you. We'll, we'll talk.
Thank you.
All right. Take care now.
All right. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Bye, guys. Good to see ya.
Take care, Sean.
Bye. Good to see you.
All right. So our questions, when we met with the folks from ATRAC, one of the questions that came up, um, which was a great question. We wanna have our youngest citizens be able to respond to these questions. So that means how simple can they be, right? And then also, as Britt was saying, you know, you test a question, we might find, and I, I'm paraphrasing, but what was she saying is don't get stuck on over-engineering the questions because you might find that a question just isn't a good question in the end, right? But what are the questions that I think some guiding thoughts for us are, um, questions for us to consider as we think about questions? Is, what do we wanna know based on the work that was done last year with ATRAC and the MBPD? And that collaboration and exploration? And what would be useful for the community to discuss based on the social context of the world? Socio-political context that we're currently in? So, the top category, those were the original questions that were proposed. Then there were some suggestions. So what I think we might wanna do is looking, if you wanna take a look and read through those suggestions and the original questions, what questions do you think will be most meaningful for the community? And do you wanna start again? Do you wanna modify these?
And the goal is three questions, right, Dory?
Three questions, to keep it three.
Yeah. Um. My first thought is that what does a safe community for all look like is one that should definitely stay. And, and I think out of the questions that we currently have, it's the closest, thinking about, you know, can a six-year-old answer this, right? It's, it's the closest to being complete.
Okay. And I, when I think about little people, I think about the word "all" without anything after it because young children are concrete thinkers. So that question, the only suggestion that I would make so kids will understand it, and I'm talking to my six, six years in the under crowd, what does a safe community look like for all people?
Yes, that, that would be much more specific.
Yes, that's good.
Like it too.
And, um, I'll wait till you finish.
Oh, you go ahead. I'm so used to multitasking.
For little ones again, what do we do to make the community safe? And what do police do to make the community safe? Is that too leading of a question?
Yeah, I totally, in my mind's eye, you know what I'm seeing right now? I'm seeing small children drawing pictures of what that would be, and it's gonna be so powerful, right? When you see little children and how they perceive the question. To make. Should it be "the" or "our" community? I'm sorry, Kathy, did you say?
Oh, I like "our". Yeah.
And then what do police officers?
Yes. To make our community safe.
So going back to this note under how might we help you feel safe? There, there was a concern that voicing community safety is a responsibility of other people, not our individual responsibility. Which I, like, I hear, I totally hear that. And so my, what I'm gonna throw out there is, is the, what was it about that question that gave someone the feeling that we were putting community safety back on the individual? Was it the use of "we"? Or another word in there? I'm asking because I wanna make sure that we understand what it was that, that made that question feel off so that we don't do that same thing in another question. Does that make sense?
Yes. You know what, and I think this is what was said, um, I remember this from the meeting. It's saying that, it's, it's, it was similar to saying that the "we" has the power versus you, that I'm gonna do something to make you feel safe, Sadie, versus you being empowered to make yourself feel safe. Does that make sense?
Yes, if it does.
And, and knowing a few things that I know now, I'm gonna say that cultivating the collaborative conversations question is gonna come up in so many other spaces within the city and over the next few months, that I don't even think we have to go there. I think we can concentrate really on community safety and the relationship with police.
I'm sorry, I've got to leave now.
Oh, Kathy, it was so good to see you.
Thank you.
Hi Kathy.
Thanks for joining us. Have a safe, safe travels.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye Kathy.
Bye. Okay.
See, I love those two questions. What do we, what do we do to make our community safe is like an action step? So it gets people to think about the action. So, but I'm wondering if it should be a, how? How do we make our community safe?
I'm fine with either one. I'm also kind of feeling like those are the three questions.
You're feeling like these are the three? So what is a safe?
Right, and I mean, I know I'm like some, yes, yes. So one is like objective, so taking part in the situation. And then one involves my actions within the community. And then another one involves a public safety official's actions in the community.
Yes.
And I think those are, those, that hits all three points in my, in my opinion.
And they're pretty simple. I agree.
Yeah. Because the other thing is that, you know, I wanna make sure that whoever is willing to give us their time to fill out the cards, that it's something they can fill out thoughtfully, but also pretty quickly.
Exactly. I know, I was thinking like, what do you give people after they've filled out the cards?
What do you give people?
Yeah, like, is there a sticker? Is there something, some kind of, I was like, what empowerment element could you give people? Like you're.
I mean, people love their stickers. You, you know, when election season comes around, people love their stickers. Couldn't get a sticker, it didn't happen. And also stickers are easy because the, it'll have to end up being, you know, handled by the two representatives that are there. So a sticker is very simple to kind of give away.
Or maybe it's how can we make, oh, I think that's it. How, how can we make our community safe?
How can we work together to make our community safe? Kind of an engaging component in there.
Okay. Okay.
I like that, to make our communities safe. How do police officers make our communities safe?
I like, now I like the work together part even more. Assuming we're asking them like in that order.
Uh, we want the police officer one last, right? Is that?
We want it last?
Do we want it last or do we want it, oh, I see what you're saying. Got it.
It's the work together portion that I think, because then the assumption is working together, in my mind, working together includes working together with the police officers too. Versus them being apart if we put that question last.
Yeah, earlier, so I was hearing, I'll talk, it's my, my, okay, yeah, it is. As I was hearing, I'll talk, I was thinking about like, okay, how would you like to engage? What would you like your engagement to look like with, with the city or commu, or, or police officers? And I think that encompasses that and everything that they're saying.
I think this language is beautiful because it is so simple. And Paulo, will the city be able to translate into the primary languages?
Yeah, so I could, our options, obviously Spanish being one of them, but also our seven primary languages that are spoken here in Beaverton, um, I could get them translated in all of them. Russian, Vietnamese, Japanese, Korean, and, did I say Russian? And Spanish. So I'll, I'll be happy to take care of that once these are confirmed.
Sounds good. I think, y'all, we did that in less than 15 minutes. I'm a little shocked and surprised, but, but I'm going with it. So I'm thinking next steps and bring it back to ATRAC and send it to Neil and say, hey, the three questions, the rationale is that we want it to be simple enough for our youngest community members. And simple enough for anybody to fill out a card.
Yes.
At a particular spot that we pop up in. Those are such good questions, y'all. These are good questions. I love them. All right, so I will take care of sending these forward. And we just have nine minutes to say, I get to say thank you both because that was huge to get those, those kind of down. And I wonder, my wondering would be, do we wanna take a few minutes since we have some time to talk about the demographics?
Yep, we can. Um, I had a comment on that, so I am by no means a legal professional. But my question is, is it as big of a deal to collect information if we're not collecting, like, main phone number email?
Oh, do you mean, um?
Cause I sensed that there was some concern with like maybe collecting some additional information, but as long as you don't have main email, phone number, like those kinds of things, then is it as big of a concern to just collect the other?
I'm gonna say no, because, and this is just from my experience with surveys, right? So doing them in, in, um, school communities, when we do surveys at school communities, I usually ask people not to put their names. But the reason, we may want the demographic data, for example, race and ethnicity. That might, their comments might be tied to what their experiences are with police, right? Because we know that only 20% of America has contact with police. In particular, people identified as white have far fewer contacts. So that's what, that's to me why that information is important because it helps us to see like who's, who's responding, right? Just like age, different age groups seem to have different perspectives, gender. And I was thinking neighborhood, are there other data that you would wanna collect? Because this is pretty quick because it's literally checking.
The boxes. Um, well, I also wanna add that I like how many options you have in the ethnicity and race section. I appreciate all of that. Um, I mean, race, ethnicity, age, gender. I feel like those are the basics, honestly. I, I thought that the neighborhood portion was kind of like the curve ball, but I see why. That makes, that makes sense. That makes sense.
Yeah, because I think for the police, they might be able to look at their data and say, like, oh, there's been more incidents in this particular or more police interactions in this neighborhood. And people who live in that, that area.
Yes. I'm comfortable with, with these. I wouldn't add or take anything away.
A quick question. So, and I'm sorry if you mentioned this earlier, but is the idea that on one side, like, it'd be on a card and on one side of the card would be the three questions we discussed? And then the other side of the card would be those demographic questions? Okay. Um, and I'm just wondering, maybe this isn't a big deal, I'm not sure, but for translation purposes, I'm wondering if leaving it open-ended, so what racial, ethnic heritage do you identify with?
And you raise a great point, Paula, because actually that's the way a lot of data collection is being done now around, around race and identity. Just to self-select and put it in and leave it blank.
So I'm just wondering if we, if we wanna consider that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
And then when I do the translation for this, I could either send over the text to be translated and then we would just put it into whatever card or design that we'd want. Or I could, well, what, what would work better, actually? This is the ideal scenario, is that we have the final design of the card written out in English. And that way I could send it to them for translation because often, um, like you could have, my name is Paulo in English and that takes up this much space. But then when you translate it into another language, it lengthens it or shortens it. And the translators there are really good at being able to format it to be as close as possible to how you originally put it. So just sharing that, that, you know, when y'all have the final design, just send it to me in English and I could go ahead and get it translated and say, you know, stay as close as possible to this design. And then we could have it color coded, red for Spanish and, you know, or whatnot. So it's also easier for us who don't, who maybe, is to identify it.
So I like the idea of like just eliminating all of these, right? And just leaving it open-ended.
I'm good with that.
I love that idea because it just makes it, it'll make it easier for translation. I love that idea, cuz it just makes it, it'll make it easier for translation purposes and easier for people to identify. This part, I will check with Britt, since she's most recently been doing research, and see if those particular questions are within, if the question is phrased in a way that's respectful and inclusive of all.
And I think a next step for me, that at least I wrote down, was to just see if with this, these demographic info questions, to see if there's, do they need to be vetted anywhere? I don't think they do. But yeah, I'll, I respect what Neil's saying and I'll go check it out.
Yeah, I think, so Paulo, do you want? So once we send these up to Neil, the BPD will approve or modify as they think they want to, or not. And then we'll come back again. So we'll show them to ATRAC saying, just hey, these are the questions that we came up with as a subcommittee. And so I think at that point, then maybe it would be good to vet them. At that point, they'll be vettable, right? With whoever it is in the city. CC seems to be the person kinda doing all of this right now.
Right, yeah, I was basically just checking with CC.
Yeah. But if you think of other people that we need to check in with, let me know. So also have Brett look at this language. Welcome, much conversation has taken place in Beaverton and communities across the country during the past year about community safety. Wanna know your thoughts and ideas? Please share your thoughts and ideas on this card. Now that it will be displayed here, it will be shared with the Beaverton Human Rights Advisory Commission and the Beaverton Police Department. All responses are anonymous. Yeah, we just got so much done, that's awesome. Yay. Anything that y'all need to let me know as we part, as we get ready to part from each other? I'm gonna say go out and enjoy the day. Gorgeous for my little office right now. And I hear somebody's got some little person with them who wants to go outside.
That is what we're gonna go do, actually. We're gonna go play at the splash pad, so.
Better questions, Sadie, the little person you're with.
The little person is three. Not yet.
I love it. Well, thank you both for all your work today. I'll work on notes now, so I don't get caught in doing other things and we'll send them right out to you. Thanks so-
Awesome. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of the day. Bye.